Meeting in order, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to this flag and the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thanks for coming, everybody. Beautiful day out. Here the fish are starting to bite too. Which is always a good thing. A roll call, please.
John DeBoyer.
Here.
Maureen Boryn.
Absolute excuse.
Mark Bouchard.
Here.
Artie Bryson.
Here.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Here.
Crystal Regan.
Yep.
Cindy Valentine here.
Okay. If bill's payable, I'll entertain a motion.
Board, I'd like to make a motion to approve the bill's payable in the amount of $212,146.88 and 88 cents.
Support.
Support.
Motion to support, any discussion?
I have one. Mr. Supervisor, when it comes to our annual look back with our water sharing with the city of Elginak, who is responsible for confirming the overage amount? In this case, it's somewhere around 60 G.
Yeah, we have it audited by McInerney, Miller, and Marine City.
Okay.
The CPA goes through.
Yep. And they do the same for Elginak as they do for Clay?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, they're all audited. What they, we try to do is, is get estimate on what the cost should be.
Uh huh.
At the end of the year, it's called the look back and, you know, the auditors compile the charges. Sometimes we get a.
Credit.
Credit for 70 grand, sometimes we don't.
And then McInerney reports that to you?
Yep, and Elginak.
And Elginak.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good question. Any other discussion? Hearing none, roll call.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Okay. Motion passes. Uh, let's see, next we have.
You want to amend your agenda?
What's that? Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I always forget that one. Uh, I'd like to have a motion to amend the agenda. Under C, it's going to be, um, the Colony Tower, what would we call that?
Inspection?
Inspection. And, um, it's going to be for recoding and repainting the Colony Tower. That would be C. And D would be approving, uh, a new welcome sign for Clay Township as we enter in.
So moved.
Okay. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion carries. All right, next supervisor's report. And, let's see. It's been busy. Thursday, April 18th, 11:30 to 1:30 at the Elginak Lions Hall, we are having, the first time we're doing this, a state of the community address. And, um, we have speakers from Elginak, Clay, Ira, and St. Clair County there. Um, we heard rumors, at least, that McClain was going to make it, but that's, she had a cancel on us. But, um, it's an event sponsored by the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce, and last time I looked, I think we had 75 people registered for it, and lunch will be provided. So if you're interested, I would just go on the Anchor Bay Chamber of Commerce website, and they got it there. Um, the low bid for the, uh, park playground project came in, under 556,000. And, um, as you know, we did got, we, we received, or was awarded a Spark grant to pay for 100% of that, of 584,000 dollars. And that's one of our amendments for our, um, our agenda items tonight. The sewer lining rehab project is out for bid. Uh, the bid opening is April 29th. And, uh, so I'm anticipating we'll have it before our board meeting to award for the first meeting in May. Um, getting a lot of questions and a lot of requests for information on it. So I think we're going to have a significant amount of, uh, um, people bidding on it, which is good. Uh, we applied for the Eagle discharge permit for the National Pollutant Discharge and Elimination System, MPDES submission. I won't read you the whole thing on there, for the Harsons Island Waste Water Treatment Plant. The status has, uh, been updated, they approved it, and it's locked in for review. And, um, this, this is actually the last big hurdle for permitting, and it looks promising. Um, and we still got to finalize the wetland mitigation with Eagle, but we have a verbal commitment, and, um, uh, next couple of weeks, I'll be working to put that together and get that rolling too. So, it's looks, everything looks promising along those lines. Uh, the county agreed to give Clay Township, uh, their part of their ARPA funds, 125,000 dollars towards a, a new mobile stage, and also 176,000 dollars towards outdoor exercise equipment that will be, and other upgrades for our park that we'll, we'll have in the park next door. Um, we're waiting for the paperwork from the county for the 60,000 dollars towards, for the fire department, that will go towards radios. And, um, it's, uh, and, oh, and I'm, um, I have the signed agreements from the county for both the, the stage and, um, park upgrades, and I'm getting ready to put that out for bid. Huh, I was gonna hopefully do it yesterday, but that didn't happen. The next couple of days. Um, it's gotta go out for bid for 45 days, and then, um, so forth and so on. We gotta follow the build back better requirements, uh, for, for the bidding. And we're also finalizing the bid documents for the wireman replacement project. Uh, I think the only outstanding thing is we're waiting for MDOT to approve what we want to do, and, um, then, at that time, we can release it. Um, for that project, we're getting a wide air, a wide range to start and come, and finish the project, but as soon as they start, they're gonna have, like, I don't know, five, six, whatever the engineer decides of a window to for completion. We don't want to tour up for a long time, but we're getting flexibility when to start that project. Hopefully it will attract more bidders for that. Uh, let's see, we started union negotiations with our fire unit, MAFF, actually today, and I'll be talking with them tomorrow. Um, and we're working on the several projects stemming from our ARPA funds workshop. Cleanup Weekend is May 18th on the mainland, and on Harsons Island, May 18th and 19th. Um, May's a busy month. Marsh Cleanup, St. John's Marsh is May 11th. And Clay Days, along with the American Indian Powwow, is May 11th, starting at noon. Uh, in the park, the, uh, marsh cleanup starts at 9:00 AM, uh, and they meet at, um, DNR access site by St. John's Marsh on this end of the marsh. And, uh, let's see, we got the San Souci Block Party, scheduled to be May 18th, starts at 5:00 PM downtown San Souci, and we got three great bands booked on two different stages, so that's all I have for that. Questions? Good to go? Next we have public comments. Any public comments, please? Judy, are you up?
Judy Campbell, 6052 St. Pierre, and same question, do we have a date? And to those of you I haven't talked to, I still would like to talk to.
Okay. Thank you. Any other public comments?
Rich Holcomb, 1202 Gore Drive, Harsons Island. Um, comment I've got is for the chief and all the firemen did a great job on the frag money fire. Great job. Uh, the other one is for Dancing in the Streets. Always under the impression that was for San Souci businesses, drawing money for them. I'm just wondering why last year, you allowed Elginak to come in with their golf cart and sell tickets.
Elginak Lions?
Right. I mean, we've got our own lions, and they have their tickets ready to go for this year.
Also for service groups.
Well, I just thought that was the whole idea behind this whole thing, is to support the businesses over there.
Mm-hmm.
All right, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Any other public comments?
Suzie Pryor, 7831 South Channel. I kind of have two, just a personal one, and then also on behalf of the nonprofit. Um, for the personal one, I went back, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, but I went back and listened to it, and I know there's a lot of information discussed about the LG Wheel. Um, and I guess I just have a couple of questions. I know that the PCE quote was approved, and it sounded like it was kind of a as you go, because it seemed like the scope got quite a bit bigger than it was initially presented at the town hall. Um, so I guess kind of a follow-up to that approval is who's deciding when each phase is being moved into, um, you know, just from a dollar perspective, if that whole thing goes through, I think Cindy, um, pointed out that, you know, we'll just run out of money to even get something up and going if too much is done too quickly. Um, and the second question regarding the LG Wheel is, why was the Phase 1 expanded out to Bar Harbor rather than just keeping it from Maple to La Croix? Um, you know, I appreciate planning for the future and needing room to expand and all of that, but again, just being conscientious of dollars that we already have versus dollars that are in the works but not yet guaranteed, you know, we want to make sure that the property that was donated, um, by business owners is actually getting something up and running for the town before we run out of money.
Mm-hmm.
So that's my comments for the LG Wheel.
Okay. I mean, that's the intent, so.
Um, my other comment is on SSDI. Again, I know this is public comments and not a Q and A, so, you know, I understand that there's not answers available immediately, but I sent this in an email as well, so you guys have time to review and respond. Um, but, you know, Rich was just talking about Dancing in the Streets, we know that's coming up. Um, it's definitely an event that the community has grown to look forward to, and we're all very excited about that. Um, with the excitement aside a little bit, I think there's a general feeling through talking with other community members and some business owners about a lack of maybe overall coordination and communication with what exactly is going on and when. Um, you know, kind of specifics of, you know, where exactly porta potties are going to be and where they're at, you know, stages, um, who's supplying the power to where, um, safety protocols in case of an emergency, because we are blocking down, you know, blocking out the whole street. Um, I know the flyer says the event starts at 5, but at what point is traffic actually going to not be allowed to come through? Um, and also, you know, like vendors, is that permitted, and who's kind of managing that? Kind of to Rich's point about it being for the island businesses, um, you know, you're blocking off the street, yeah, but you're also blocking off private businesses' private property. So I think there should be consideration and maybe involvement with them about who's doing what and where as to not compete with what they're working on. But nonetheless, you know, we're grateful for the event, we just feel like if there's maybe a little bit more collaboration or coordination, so they, especially the business owners whose properties are being blocked off, maybe are in the know about what's going on, I think it will just help make sure it's kind of a success and, you know, enjoyable event for everybody involved. So, I look forward to you guys' responses. Um, if you have any questions, obviously you have my email, so please reach out.
All right, thank you. But I will, on the safety end of it, I know, um, the police and the fire met with a couple people from downtown, and, um, I'm not sure exactly who, but there's plans on getting safe emergency vehicles in and out.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. Any other public comments?
Christine Holcomb, 1202 Gore Drive, and I'm here on behalf of SS Downtown Inc. First off, we just want to say thank you to the township, um, and appreciate your interest and willingness to join our endeavor in the creation of a placement of a welcome sign for San Souci. Um, there have been some comments and statements recently made that we would like to address regarding our project. Several of us have been contacted by individuals that attended the recent HISCFA meeting this past weekend, and residents voiced their concern that there were some comments made at the meeting regarding the welcome sign that left them feeling that SSDI was not being cooperative or communicating with the township. So to try and clear things up with this board and the minds of fellow residents and those that have so generously contributed to the project, uh, we emailed a timeline that shows you all of our contacts back and forth. Um, I have extra copies if anybody needs it, I hope you all had a chance to review the email. Uh, with that being said, there's some points we'd like to address. First, there appears to be confusion as to the name of our nonprofit, for starters. We are licensed by the state as SS Downtown Inc. Uh, for those of you that aren't familiar with us, we are a Harsons Island nonprofit that was formed in May of 2022. We received our 501(c)(3) nonprofit status from the state in May of 23. Our mission is to support community efforts to create a thriving and sustainable downtown that serves all members of our community. We started out doing some cleanup work in downtown San Souci, painting the curbs, cleaning things up, putting some planters out, and we held up a Light Up the Town tree lighting and caroling at Christmas last December. In May, after we received, 23 when we received our nonprofit status, we met at a, we had a regular meeting, and we decided that a welcome sign was going to be our first priority for town. With that being said, we started planning a fundraiser, which turned out to be our cook-off that we held at October, and all those funds were to go towards the purchase of a sign. We received various donations very generously, and all of those were earmarked for the purchase and installation. Um, however, shortly after we set that goal, we saw that the township board had made that one of their initiatives. So a meeting was immediately scheduled, requested of Supervisor Bryson, for an in-person meeting, and that happened on, uh, October 5th of 23. No, 22?
No, 23.
23. Um, the timeline is extensive, so I'm not going to go point by point on that, but basically, after requesting SSDI provide rough sketches on November 17th of 23, it took seven weeks before we got any kind of drawings back. Once the designs were received, and they were from Phillips Lighting, we received just, um, from Supervisor Bryson, forwarded them to us, and also our understanding to you. On January 18th of 24, we responded that our preference was for the concept of design C, and quotes were received following that on designs A, B, and D. On March 25th of 24, we inquired as to whether there were quotes sought from any other companies, and we were advised there had not been. So we felt it was our due diligence, since we were going to use funds that had been contributed to us specifically for the sign project, that we needed to contact other companies and possibly get some other quotes. Those are still outstanding for us, we have not received anything back yet, mainly because our treasurer has been in Florida for the winter, and she was kind of the contact person. The quote for concept C that we didn't, didn't receive until March 27th, and at that same time, we were requested to provide what our monetary contribution or percentage was going to be on that day that we received the quote. Uh, we responded the following day on March 28th, that we had not yet determined a budget because we were still in fundraising, and we still had quotes outstanding. And we received an email this afternoon also, that he, that Supervisor Bryson stated he had still not received a response as to the percentage or monetary amount SSDI would be contributing, and then we emailed the township with our timeline. We really would like to continue to partner with the township and work together. Um, however, we feel there needs to be some flexibility to allow us to continue with the fundraising so that we can contribute more significantly towards this goal that we have. Um, kind of questioned the need for a rushed timeline at this point. We don't know if there's outstanding issues we're not aware about. Um, we're still in the fundraising stages and awaiting quotes. We are also looking at the option of possibly, there's been individuals that have approached us about doing labor, providing materials, um, so that's out there too. But we can't do that until we have all the quotes and exactly where we want to go. So we hope you'll consider our request to be patient and, and let us continue fundraising and work together on something that's going to benefit everybody. Um, but again, we thank you for, for, you know, working with us. With that being said, we want to let you know that SSDI is going to host a first annual road rally on the island on Saturday, June 8th. More details will be coming soon, so keep an eye out on our Facebook page or, um, next door, I think we'll have it out on everything. And if anybody wants to be involved, they can check out our website, or email us, or follow us on Facebook or Instagram. And also, we're having monthly meetings on the second Monday of every month at 6 o'clock at the Harsons Island Lions Hall, except for July, which will be the third Monday. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments?
I'm Bob Coombs, 5643 Green. The, two things, being a business owner in San Souci, uh, one of the partners in the bar, I donated the property for the development. I think we need a individual to act as liaison between the township and the business owners to be apprised of exactly what's going on, timelines, funding, do we need more funding, how we can help support the project, but then how we can get the information on where we're at in the project to each other, so that there's no confusion or misconceptions. Um, I think, rumors run rampant, and so every time you turn around, you hear something that's disturbing, and we, I'd like to get it resolved, and I'd volunteer to do that if I could help. Uh, the other thing is, we should address parking in town, it's been a real problem, and how, if there's a remedy, I don't have the answer, but what we can do about that. But I volunteer to, uh, to work with Artie and then anybody else concerned to, to collect information and, uh, and then spread it out to the people involved that need to know, just so we're all transparent and open. Um, so if you need me, let me know.
Sounds good, Bob, thank you. Thank you much. Okay, any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll move right to the consent agenda, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of the meeting from 4:02 and 4:09, and board approved check reports from the meeting of 4:02 and in-between meetings, um, from 4:03 to 4:11.
Support. Okay, we have motion and support, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, under new business, we have the Spark Grant Bid Acceptance. Uh, we're recommending Midstate Recreation. They came in at 555,000, 565 dollars. Um, the next closest bid was 600,000. Um, and I, uh, I handed out a revised, uh, statement from Project Control. Um, and, uh, I think to make it cleaner, we should maybe do two motions, one to award the bid to, um, Midstate, or whoever, but award the bid, and the second motion for PCE for the contracting layout and inspection, uh, administration, which they actually performed part of that already, which we approved at a different meeting, because it was way too much work that I didn't have the time to actually put that out for bid. Um, and I got the bid tabulations for you, and copy of the bid that Midstate put in with all the bonds, requirements, and, and everything else. Uh, time of completion, they're supposed to have it all done, completed by September 6th, so it's a pretty aggressive, uh, schedule. And he's, he really wants to get, he can't order the equipment until we approve it and they get my, uh, signature on the contract. Um, and I'm not sure exactly when they're going to do construction, they're probably talking a couple, three weeks, um, total. I was in, and part of the bid, too, is they're going to deliver the existing, uh, two, two placecapes to Brown's Field. And I, I actually, you know, talked to them a few times, but last Saturday at their meeting, and, um, and if we have any excess material in the play area for the woodships and everything, we'd, uh, have that delivered over there too. I think they're gonna have to make their playscape area bigger, but, uh, they'll have to figure that out. Um, so that's where we're at. I guess, uh, do a motion if, uh, to award the bid.
I'll make a motion to approve the Spark Grant Bid Acceptance from Midstate Recreation in the amount of 555,000, 565 dollars.
Support.
Yes, uh, motion support, and I should mention too, we received the bids and we opened it up, then we had to send it to the DNR for their review, and they recommended also to go with Midstate Recreation. And they are the, actually same people who put the existing playscape in, and the splash pad in, so they're, they're no stranger to our park, and I think they do good work.
So did they give an estimated timeline, start to finish?
They, they, well, it depends, the holdup is going to be getting the playscapes delivered to them, that's why I talked.
So, once they start construction, do they know how long?
Yeah.
How, how long?
A couple of weeks, a couple, three weeks. Um, first, you know, they remove the, the existing structure, then they're gonna pour the, it's called pour and plate, the, the spongy surface, and then they assemble the, uh, equipment in place, so. Um, but yeah, you know, they don't want to be held up by waiting for parts from the, the playscape manufacturer.
I've got a question on number three in the bid specs, traffic control for 5,000 dollars.
Yeah, I, I question that too, I, I don't think they need it, and that will probably be not in the, in the actual, uh, draw.
Anything else you question?
Well, mobilization wasn't too bad, uh, I thought it was a little high. Um, but that's, you know, they have checkmark on all these items, John's familiar with it, aren't you, John? If they have no traffic control, they don't get paid for that.
I'm assuming that'd be permitting getting all the equipment here, wouldn't it?
Yeah. And same thing, well, they only got 2,000 dollars for soil erosion, they'll probably have to put a skirt up around the, the area, but.
And who's going to monitor the removal of the current play structure?
Well, that, that's what we talked to next, it would be, uh, Project Control. Roll call.
Artie Bryson.
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan.
Yes.
Crystal Regan.
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer.
Yes.
Mark Bouchard.
Yes.
Okay, motion passes. Next, we have a, a motion for approval of Project Control to, to, uh, do the bid documents, contract administration, construction layout, and inspection. And he did reduce this, in your current packet, he had different numbers, and told him to sharpen his pencil, I think he knocked about 2,000 bucks off. I think he knocked about 2,000 bucks off.
Money?
What's that say to you?
Board, I'll make a motion to approve the Project Control Engineering Equipment Replacement Bid Recommendation, Engineering and Contract for $14,800. Inspections for $11,000, and Construction Layout for $4,500.
Support.
Okay, motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes. Time for me to do a happy dance. That was a biggie.
Bring on the pirate ship.
Bring on the pirate ships. We're going to have to name them, so keep that in the back of your mind. SS Muskrat or something? I don't know. We got two of them. Okay, next, we have payment limited tax general obligation bond. We do this twice a year, right?
Yes, I'll make a motion to approve the payment for the limited tax general obligation bond in the amount of $298,945.
Motion support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes, for sure.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
All right, motion pass. Next, you know, we were talking about getting the Colony Tower repainted, because the township does own that, and it's getting, getting ready. And, you know, the proper procedure is, you know, you have a tower or engineering company go out and inspect it, they analyze the coating, they'll do a bunch of testing as far as lead content and structural issues, and then they would hopefully, well, it would be a different part, but they would put it out for bid and manage the actual re-job. Pittsburgh Tank actually did, did it last time. It was, it was coated about 25 years ago. And I've used, or we've used Dixon Tank, and I'm familiar with Nelson Tank, but Pittsburgh Tank, he first gave us a, one quote for the inspection and, and everything, and then he looked back, I was talking to him about it, he goes, "Yeah, we were out there." He went back at his old records and, and found some information that would help him. So he's actually lowered, lowered the cost to $1,750, so.
I was going to bring that up, if they'd already been there, one, 25 years ago, some of the inspections still in place.
Right. Yeah. And the other two companies are good. Dixon came in at $6,500, and Nelson at $4,460. I think from the results, from, I mean, three of them are going to be about the same. 25 years ago, they did a huge rehab of it. Were you here then, John?
Yeah.
They had two or three of the supports was actually sinking, and they, they jacked it up and poured footings under it, and made it so it's not the Leaning Tower of Colony.
Right.
And so, and even the guy from Pittsburgh said, "We don't anticipate any issues like that anymore," but they'll check all the welds, you know, the ladders, all that stuff, and, you know, content, they disinfect the tank, and they do quite a bit, so.
Yeah, they've got the history on it, so.
Yeah. So I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the Colony Tower inspection for $1,750 from Pittsburgh Tank and Tower Group.
Support.
Yeah, motion support. Any more discussion?
I checked around with other communities, and this is their recommendation as well.
Yep. Thank you for that.
Yeah, they're a good company.
Yeah, they are. I, they're from Kentucky, actually, and they'll come up here and do the job. Okay, any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, or not roll call, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone oppose? Motion carries. Okay, next, we have approval of the welcome sign for Clay Township from Phillips Sign Lighting. When did we start talking about this, Chris? About three years ago, two, three years ago? And we have one there, and we just didn't think it was big enough, so we were talking...
It's a little underwhelming, like the...
What's that?
It's a little underwhelming, like the, like the Detroit zone.
Exactly. Yeah. Exactly. And so, we got a quote for a larger sign, and we're going to take the existing sign and move it to the north part of Clay Township by the state park. We got the bigger sign, and that one was for $14,700. I gotta get to my...
14,72187.
Yep. And then a smaller sign, but still bigger. I don't have my, I can't find my price, which was, yeah, bonding, which was $13,432.27. Then to relocate it, there's a price for $4,800. I personally think we can relocate it with our water department for a lot cheaper.
I agree.
And I, I express that to Phillips, so I, I would say, you know, let's just approve either one or four of their sign. So everybody, I mean, I like the first one, the bigger one, but we can have a discussion about that.
I'll make a motion to approve the Phillips sign for the amount of $14,721.87.
Support.
Okay, we have motion and support. Any more discussion? He said he would probably, you know, order the materials and get, get on it right away. They're in a little bit of lull, that's why I kind of wanted to see if we can do the other sign at the same time, but that's okay. And as soon as it's done, we can, we can come out here and do her. So it won't be that big of a weight. Any more discussion? Hearing none. Roll call.
Crystal Regan?
Yes.
Cindy Valentine, yes. John DeBoyer?
Yes.
Mark Burchard?
Yes.
Artie Bryson?
Yes.
Kristi Hiltonan?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. That's all we have.
Right.
A fun meeting. Okay, our next meeting will be May 6th at 6:00. Board member comments. Cindy, you have any?
I do. I know you guys, you've been going back and forth with the downtown San Souci, or San Souci Downtown, Inc. I, I know part of it was, you know, we're working on our budget for next year and utilizing our ERPA funds, so I was hoping we could get something to work out there, and hopefully we still can, you know, before we get our budget intact for the next year, which is coming up real quick.
Real quick.
And other than that, Ms. Campbell, I think we addressed last week that there is not any vote coming back up. That does not need to be voted on again, so I didn't want you coming every week with the intention that there's, there's going to be a vote, because there's not. That's all I have.
All this. Okay.
Mark? Planning Commission will be on the 24th. I believe we have that thing in the agenda, but I suppose, or suspect that the rezoning from R1 Single Family Residential to C3 General Business will be on the agenda, on the 24th.
Or is that for?
On Mill Street.
Mill Street, okay.
Oh, Warren.
All right. John?
Tomorrow, we're going to meet with South Water Sewer Authority. That transition seems to be going very well.
Yep.
No hiccups. That crew is doing a good job down there, so very happy with that, and happy Tax Day.
Yeah, for sure.
That's all I got.
Chris, you got PSA?
Of course.
The water temperature is 42 degrees, which means that the...
It's cold.
Which means that the wall air running up in our rivers now. So the wall air pretty good, it's just dirty water. You just have to look for some clean spots. Some really good reports coming out of Lexington and Port Santa Lac for salmon. Certainly worth a trip if you, you so choose. But most importantly is, it's boat or safety, and it's really easy for some of us to take boat or safety for granted, because it's the same thing every year, and you just think you got this under control. Apparently, there was a couple of incidents this weekend that, that got pretty hairy, and that water temperature is no joke. Hypothermia will set in in a matter of minutes, and you'll just be done, done, done. So have your throw rings ready. If you're fishing by yourself, you know, buy yourself a $30 inflatable vest, you know, just put a vest on if you're by yourself. It's just easier. Save your life, and be careful. Have fun, but be careful.
Thank you. And the water, I'll tell you, the water levels this year, it's going to be about 8, 10 inches lower than they were last year, and a lot of people are already discovering that. And I know the fire department had to go out to Mud Lake this past week.
I went back to Little Muscovet, which is a really popular summer hangout. The water was 18 inches.
And it's going to, this is the high part of the year.
18 inches. So all those spots that people thought they were going to just go back to again this year, may, may have to be...
Everybody thinks this is low water. It's actually getting to the average level right now.
We've lost, we've lost quite a bit since last year at the stand.
Yep. So. All right, Kristi?
I don't have anything.
No? Okay.
I have one other item on there.
Sure.
Speaking of high water, FEMA gave us, or reevaluated the flood zones, and if you currently had flood insurance, and if you have a mortgage, it really didn't impact you, because you've already had an existing flood payment. However, I would like to see that letter, so I can see, pass it along to two, some constituents of mine.
Okay, I can find it. What it is, if you have a current policy, your rates did not go up, but if you let it lapse and then go back to them, they're going to hit you with the new rates. But it's also transferable if you sell the property.
Right.
The, the, the old rate will stick, stay with the property for the new owners.
Some of the issues, I'm running across.
So they won't, so the rate's transferable, and they, they took in considering windblowing water is the big deal, so. All right, thanks. I just don't have a whole lot to say. We got a lot of, you know, we're getting into our, our summer months, which is, we are busy planning, planning stuff, which is fun. You have Clay Days coming up, and the Powwow, the Block Party, that's a great event, and I mean, that's done, you know, it's just Parks and Rec event. We don't have committees or anything on it, but it's fun, and if people want to help, I'm sure that can be arranged. And music in the park, we got a full lineup. I don't think we released the, the four on the island. Yes, she's still holding off for one or two sponsors, and I think we got them today. They just haven't brought in their check, which I was told they're going to today or tomorrow, so. But all kinds of good fun stuff. It's a lot of work putting that stuff together, too, but it's all good. It's like, it's part of the fun part of our job. Other than that, I don't think I have anything else. Thanks for coming, everybody.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn. Happy spring. All right. Thank you for coming, everybody.